Welcome. This is the forum for candidates for mayor and city council wards one and two for the city of Champlin. All candidates on the ballot for each position were invited to tonight's forum. I'm Wes Falkenett. I am a member of the League of Women Voters, ABC. I live in Andover, so I do not have a personal say in what is going to happen on November 6th this year in the city of Champlin. The forum is being cosponsored by the Anoka Blaine Coon Rapids Area League of Women Voters and the Champlin Women of Today. The League of Women Voters works to promote the active and informed participation of citizens in the voting process by conducting candidate forums such as this and by promoting voter registration drives for all eligible voters. The League does not endorse, support, or oppose any political party or candidate, but we do study issues of local, state, and national importance. The League is open to membership for men and women, as you can see, ages 16 and over, and we invite you to join our organization. You can visit our website, which is L W V A B C M N dot org, all one word, for more information. The Champlin Women of Today is a nonprofit volunteer organization which promotes service, growth, and fellowship. It is open to men and women, ages 18 and older, and it meets on the third Tuesday of the month at 7:00 PM in the Parks and Recreation Building here in Champlin. So about our forum tonight, we're going to divide this forum into three parts. The first two parts are televised for this part of tonight's program. That will start with the unopposed candidates for mayor and for city council ward two. And then we will follow that with the contested race for city council ward one with the three candidates that are present this evening. We'll also be doing a forum this evening for the House District 36A candidates, which will be aired separately from this forum. Our ward one candidates will be starting their part of this with three introductory questions which were supplied to them in advance. The candidate responses will be timed by our Women of Today member, who will give the candidates a 15-second notice before time is up, and then they will give a stop sign at the end of one minute. We'll also be taking audience questions this evening, each of which has a one-minute response time per question. At the end of the evening, our candidates will be invited to make a one-minute closing statement. Now, we're doing it a little bit different for Mayor Karasik and for council member Mo. As mayor of Champlin, Ryan Karasik is running unopposed, as is ward two council member Tom Mo. They will take a few minutes now to introduce themselves and give their visions of the city of Champlin, and we'll start with Mayor Karasik.
Thank you very much, and thank you to League of Women Voters for putting this on today. I'm excited to be here, and obviously, I'm excited to be your mayor. I'm going to give, for the folks at home and everybody here today, just a quick little background, myself. I was fortunate enough to serve for two years on the Planning Commission. I served for four years on the Champlin City Council, four years as a treasurer of the Economic Development Authority for Champlin, and the last year and a half as the president. And I served, fortunately, as an advisory committee, as a chairperson to Anoka Hennepin School District Advisory Council for Community Education. And of course, I was very blessed by the folks in the community to have elected me a year and a half ago as a Champlin mayor, and it's something that I have been honored with and something that I take very seriously. To give a little background as far as some of the short-term goals, the long-term and midterm and long-term goals that we have for the city of Champlin, obvious, one of the biggest things that we have going on in our community, and we've been talking about it for decades right now, is our Mississippi Crossings development. And in the last year and a half, the city council has met with dozens of developers and talked with a number of different people about this redevelopment project, and we're working very hard to try to make that project come to fruition for our community. So that was one of my personal goals, and I know that I share that goal with a lot of other council members that we have in the city of Champlin. Of course, one of the big things as well, as we just started discussing our budget, is maintaining fiscal responsibility within the city. I'm very proud, and I know everybody else is proud, that we actually have one of the lowest tax burden per capita of all of our surrounding cities, and we pride ourselves in that of being fiscally prudent with the taxpayer dollars. And I know that the council and our staff work very hard to make that a reality every single year, to be smart with your tax dollars while still providing services to the community that we all appreciate. Of course, we want to continue to make our streets safe and our neighborhoods safe. I recently read a study that was given that Champlin was ranked number 11 in the entire state of Minnesota as the safest city. And that's something that we can all be proud of and something that we can be excited about. So that's obviously something that I want to continue to maintain as well. And one of the big things is also keeping an eye on the future and planning for planning and opportunities. You know, we try to not plan for tomorrow or the next day. We try to really work hard to look at the vision of the city and the vision of the future of the city in five, 10, and 15 years from now, to find out where we're going to be at that time, so we can plan our infrastructure and plan our taxing and spending to make sure that we can meet those goals in the future. And that being said, to kind of conclude, like I had mentioned, I am extremely honored to be the mayor of Champlin, and more so now, the opportunity to hopefully continue being the mayor of Champlin. But I'll say this, that we can't do it alone. You know, I have been blessed to have an exceptional city council to work with. Everybody works hard. We work together to try to find consensus, to try to find solutions to problems, and try to build goals. And I've been fortunate to have that. We had the opportunity to do a lot of great things in our community, and I sincerely believe the best days are ahead of us, and we're going to do a lot more great things. That being said, we couldn't have done it without our city staff. Everybody from the top down, from Brett Hightkamp to John Cox, to Scott Schulte, to Jerry Hart, to Todd Tuman, and all the other employees in our city. We have the best staff and the best employees of anywhere around. They're absolutely dedicated to this community, and they're absolutely dedicated to their jobs. We could not do what we do as a council without the constant dedication, hard work, and efforts of our city staff, and I am extremely proud of that and extremely proud of all that they've accomplished in our community, and I hope that all the rest of the community can appreciate that as well. So, in closing, I'm here to serve you. Ever since I became a city councilman, has been a mantra of mine, to be there, to listen when somebody has a question or somebody has a concern, to be that person that somebody can go to and feel confident and feel comfortable that they can have a conversation with me. And we might not always get a solution to the problem, but we'll work really hard to find that solution to the problem. And I certainly hope that I can get enough votes at the end of the day, at the end of this election, to continue to be the mayor. I'm excited for the opportunity, so thank you.
Mayor Ryan Karasik, thank you. And now, we will turn the microphone to Councilman Tom Mo.
Thank you. My name's Tom Mo, and I am the ward two candidate for city council in the city of Champlin. A little bit of background about me, I've been a resident of Champlin for 18 years with my wife and our three grown children, and I've been working with and for the residents of Champlin for about the past 12 years. The first 10 of those as a member of our Environmental Resources Commission, where we did a lot of really interesting projects that I'm very, very proud of while we were serving together on that. However, that changed for me a little bit in March of 2017, when due to a vacancy for ward two, I won the appointment to that chair or to that seat to finish out that term. I also learned a valuable lesson about leaving your notes out in front of the mayor, so I could say ditto on a lot of that, but...
Right.
But I think some of the points that I want to bring up are going to show that as the mayor and as our council, a lot of us have the same feelings and the same emotions about the city of Champlin. So, for the redundancy, I apologize, but I wanted to kind of give a little bit of a background too of some of my goals for the city for the next four years. I think, short-term, I share the same goal as a lot of us in Champlin, and that is to see the completion of our construction cycle and survive our construction season. It's been a challenging year, and I'm really, really proud of the progress that we've made. Obviously, 169 has taken a lot of the focus of that construction, but in ward two, there were a couple of other projects that were very important as well, and as those near completion, we need to be very proud of the progress and the improvement that those have made. And those projects include the roadway rehabilitation reconstruction to include storm sewer and curb and gutter in the Shearest Woodlawn addition, and also the replacement of the road and storm sewer on Elm Creek Boulevard. Midterm, as our mayor stated, I'm very committed to seeing the redevelopment or the development of the Mississippi Crossings project completed. We need to secure a developer for that, and as we do that, we need to make sure that that developer shares our vision to provide an area that brings value and amenities to the residents, including meaningful access to our riverfront. Long-term, my goal is to keep Champlin a livable city, and to define livable city, I look at three areas. Number one being tax-related, that we as a city are providing the value of amenities that our residents want and need, and we do that while we're controlling our spending, and we keep our taxes in line with the values that we provide. Safety of our residents is always a major concern for us, and as was pointed out, we were just named the 11th safest city in the state, and I think as a group, we are all committed to making sure that our residents are safe, they feel safe in Champlin, and that we minimize the impact crime can have on not only our residents, but also the businesses that operate here. Last part that I feel about a livable city comes in the terms of infrastructure, and as the city ages, as we age, so does our infrastructure. Our roads, our bridges, and our underground utilities all need improvement and replacement. And over the next three years, it's proposed that we're going to spend about $10 million to repair and replace our infrastructure. I think we need to balance that repair and replacement with the demand and the need for that. All the while we do that, we need to maximize the grants and the aid available for our roads, our trails, and our utilities. That's just some of the stuff that goes through my head. I have a lot of other ideas as well, but in the respect for the other candidates tonight and their time, if anybody has any questions or would like to talk about this or any other items more, you can get my contact information off the city of Champlin website. In closing, I'd like to just say that I'm honored to serve the residents of ward two, and I look forward to doing it for the next four years. We need to keep Champlin a livable city, and we need to balance our amenities and services with our tax base. We need to control the development of what remains developable in our city. I'd like to thank Karen, Jerry, Wes, and the League of Women Voters, ABC, for the opportunity to speak to you tonight and for hosting this event. I'd like also to remind the residents of Champlin that on November 6th is your opportunity to get out and vote, and if you live and vote in ward two, I hope you vote Tom Mo for city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Tom Mo. We're going to move on to the candidates for the opposed seat in ward one. Our candidates are Tim Hutner, Jessica Tezdahl, and RJ Theil. Council Ward one represents the northern part of the city of Champlin, and we're going to start with three introductory questions that they have already been presented with. We'll start with Tim Hutner first, and Tim, your question is, describe your background and community involvement.
Well, I am Tim Hutner. I've lived in Champlin here for more than 30 years. My wife and I bought our house in 1986. We have two upstanding boys that we raised here. They went to Servants of Christ, they went to Champlin Elementary, Jackson Middle School, and both graduated from Champlin Park, and they also have lived in this city, and they do now. I attended many carnivals, ice cream socials, soccer, like everyone else does in the city, and I'm thankful for this community for giving us that opportunity to do so. It takes a village to raise children.
Thank you. Jessica Tezdahl, will you please describe your background and community involvement?
I'd be happy to. Thank you to the League of Women Voters and to the Champlin Women of Today for inviting us to attend this candidate forum, and thank you to my opponents for participating with me. My name is Jessica Tezdahl. I am the sitting council member for ward one. I'm also a commissioner on the City of Champlin EDA. My background, my husband and I moved to Champlin in 2009. We have three sons, ages 10, almost eight, and six. They attend Champlin Brooklyn Park Academy. I am active in many local youth sports organizations, including CDAA and CPYHA, the Youth Hockey Association. I'm an active volunteer and former teacher and marketing professional.
Thank you. And then RJ Theil, will you describe your background and community involvement?
You bet. And I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for having us all here tonight, and of course, the other candidates, which are two pretty great people. I mean, I know them both, and they are terrific. But I've lived in Champlin since 1990, or '91, somewhere in there, and I moved up here with my wife and two daughters. They both attended St. Stevens and then Champlin Park High School, both graduates. They both participated in sports, and that's kind of what got the ball rolling for me, getting involved in the city. I started volunteering at the high school in around the year 2000. I was actually asked by the then-mayor to be on a commission for the dreaded year 2000. And I've been, you know, active on the Planning Commission for 15 years now, and chairman of that since 2008.
Thank you. Moving to the next question, Jessica Tezdahl, what are your qualifications and why are you seeking this office?
I'll start with why I'm seeking office. I had the honor of being appointed to my position in January of 2017. In the two years that I've served on the city council, we have faced major road construction. We faced planning for our Mississippi Crossings project, infrastructure in general, public safety issues, as well as a host of others, and I feel like my work is to be continued. So I'm seeking office to be a voice and an advocate for the issues that will face ward one in the coming days, as well as Champlin as a whole, as we try to maintain the special community and the unique thing that we have here in Champlin. I'm qualified because I have a varied professional background, I'm well-connected with the city, and I work hard to do my best within all things.
Thank you. RJ Theil, same question?
Sure. I've been, as I said, working with the city since 2000. I've been on the Planning Commission since 2015, 2015, for 15 years. I've been the chair for, since 2008. I've seen many, many, many improvements. Maybe some of you have come before the Planning Commission where we had to listen to your needs or whatever, and hopefully, we did a good job by you. And I've been doing that, and I just love the city so much, and I just want to continue in a different way. I've been able to guide things through the Planning Commission, but I've had very little say as to what I think or feel, because the Planning Commission just doesn't do that. We just make sure you're following all the rules. So going forward, I'd just like to continue the way the city is going and keep that fiscal responsibility where it needs to be, so that we're all happy paying taxes that aren't ridiculous.
Thank you. And Tim Hutner, what are your qualifications and why are you seeking this office?
Well, like everyone else up here, I feel I'm qualified for this ward one. I run my own business. I have experience in whether in the economic ups and downs, being in your own business. I'm an educated technician, I have a computer degree. I am an inventor and have two U.S. patents, but I also understand the role in government. I'm a business member on the EDA of Dayton, and we work in conjunction with main council to have experience in maintaining businesses, bringing new businesses and HRA redevelopment TIF districts. We also have ignited a city rebranding program for Dayton. Now, why? We have a rather young council, and I'm seeking office because I think this ward has been misrepresented for quite some time. I encourage you all to watch past city council meetings and make sure that you're seeing what you see. I believe that the people, it's time that they vote instead of council members being appointed. The last two were appointed, so my priorities are your priorities, and I represent you.
Thank you. Our third introductory question goes first to RJ Theil. What are your short- and long-term goals for the city of Champlin?
Short-term goals would be to help get us through the construction, as was mentioned by Tom Mo. And of course, that's kind of easy. We're coming to an end, and I think we're pretty lucky that it happened in a one-year period. This could have been stretched out over three years, and I think one year of pain is a lot better than three years of torture. And that's kind of in the short term, and then to oversee what's immediately before us coming up through the gateway area, coming up with opportunities for the park and rec department, and basically keeping us on that even keel. Long-term, there is a number of things that we have to look at, what's coming up to our west. I think a biggest concern that we have that may be swept under the table is 2,000 homes that will be going up to our west in the next two years, and those people will all be using our roads and our city streets to get around. So we need somebody to help keep that even.
Thank you. Same question, short- and long-term goals, to Tim Hutner.
Well, right now, short-term is win this election. I think the immediate priorities are the road construction gridlocks. I mean, we're getting to an end on that, so we're, you know, beating a dead horse. There's been a lot of things that I've already reported to council, thanks to our mayor and some council members. We had a couple of issues in ward one that we couldn't get into a local business. I'm an EDA supporter, a huge EDA supporter, and when we got people who can't get to their business and they're being blocked off, well, that's a pretty big thing for me. So, in a short, the Champlins and Claire couldn't get their people in and out, and they couldn't make things happen. So, a couple well-placed calls, they helped facilitate a solution, and that was a fix. So in long-term, include priority developments, getting development done with little impact on our community, because that's a delicate balance. These impacts affect all of us, not just us, but communities around us, and I believe that if we go and shut things off, we're going to shut things off right there with the Mississippi Crossings.
Thank you, Mr. Hutner. Ms. Tezdahl, the same short- and long-term goals for the city of Champlin?
Long-term, it's so important to me that we maintain who we are as a community, that our parks are fiscal responsibility, the livability, the biking and walking, and just in general, the things that we enjoy about this community, that we preserve them, and with that, the feeling of community that comes from being a connected place. I am concerned about the Mississippi Crossings redevelopment area. I want to assure that it is doing what we want it to do, that it provides meaningful access to residents, that there are amenities that are sustainable, and that it doesn't come with a tax burden that outweighs the benefits to the community. Short-term, we're balancing the budget and looking to maintain the level of services that residents enjoy.
Thank you. Now we move on to audience questions, and the first one is actually an emailed question, which is a little bit longer, so bear with me as I read through it. Tim Hutner will be the first to receive this. The Champlin Economic Development Authority and council members are considering allowing full or partial development of part of Oxbow Park, specifically the north arm of the park extending from 112th Avenue to West River Road. Many residents are highly reluctant to see development of our passive natural parks that support pollinating bees, butterflies, birds, and other forms of wildlife within our city. Will each of you please explain what your position would be on this subject?
Hmm, well, that's a pretty good question. I don't know if I'm qualified to answer whether or not we can have bees and birds and things come in our community. I think that if we need to get into that, we have people that do that, and if not, we hire people that tell us the environmental impacts on that area. Now, if we're doing it just to pad our pockets and get more development for developers to think they can come in and move in, well, then I have a problem with that. So, I can kind of split both ways on that. You know, I'm not the bee guy. There are guys for that, and I'm not going to even begin to say I'm qualified to answer that question, but I will say that if someone's in there and they're doing some stuff that isn't right, and they're trying to get developments that they shouldn't be, and things are on the wrong side of things that smell wrong, then I'm the guy to find out.
Okay. Thank you. Jessica Tezdahl, do you need any of the questions reread, or are you okay to go?
I'm okay. Thank you. We are 95% built out in Champlin. We only have about 5% of our land space that is yet to be developed, and according to our financial management plan, we're within about 10 years of that being the reality. I think preserving our green spaces is an important piece, something that I support if we're going to maintain Champlin as we know and love it. As far as bees and pollinators go, that I think comes with green spaces, and so does amenities like our parks and wrecks and trail system, so I'm for preserving the green spaces.
Thank you. RJ Theil, do you need me to read any of the questions?
No, not at all. Thank you. First of all, I'd like to say I'm allergic to bees, and I'd like to thank my neighbors at the Bauer Berry Farm for no longer raising bees, whether they knew it or not, but bees are not. I too am not in favor of knocking down a single tree if possible to have any kind of development, but only basically reading the minutes of one of the council meetings or I believe some of the plan actually wasn't to take any of the usable area of the park, and hopefully, that's the case. If it was to come before me today, I would have to look long and hard at what and how was going to be developed, and again, as Tim stated, you know, what do the experts say that the city staff would no doubt hire to take a look at what's occurring? But on the surface, nature wins over people most of the time for me, so...
Thank you. Our next question is a little shorter. This first goes to Jessica Tezdahl. Roundabouts, for them or against them? If you are for roundabouts, where would you like to see the city install another or more?
Thank you for that question. Well, it's interesting that you ask that, because I was just reading some information that WSB, the engineering firm that consults with the city, provided about roundabouts, and it stated that roundabouts have, I'm going to maybe potentially have this figure wrong, but it was between 90 and 95% reduction, or resulted in a 90 to 95% reduction in traffic collisions, because it slows down your entry. Now, that being said, they didn't provide percentages on, you know, what happens once you get in, and what kind of crashes may result from that. I have been in an accident in a roundabout, so... Yeah. So, you know, I think it really depends on where it is. One place we're looking is at 109th and Jefferson Highway. That's before both cities of Brooklyn Park and Champlin, and, you know, we're taking a look at it. It's a case-by-case situation.
Thank you. RJ Theil?
Certainly, I love roundabouts. The opportunity to get through an intersection without wasting gas, stopping for no reason at all, just to let massive quantities of air go by because the lights are red, that kind of thing, never liked that. A roundabout lets you get through. It's been proven time and time again that traffic moves much faster and at a quicker pace through a roundabout than it does at a semaphore or at a four-way stop. We need, I don't care if we put a roundabout at every intersection we've got, but naturally, there are points of concern. West River Road or Dayton River Road and South Diamond Lake Road, there's nothing there now, and when we have 2,000 new houses opening up to our west and they're all coming through here, I'm not going to be able to get out of my neighborhood for 10 minutes. That's going to drive me crazy, because there's no traffic control. Some of my friends hate roundabouts, but they're Democrats, and they should love them, because you're always going left.
On that note, thank you. Ms., Tim Hutner?
I had to calm down after that one. You know, I've seen it both ways. I operate a tow truck at my business, and we're in the car business, so when you have accidents and you've been on scene, and these people are damaged and they're hurt and they're in situations, you know, I get the purpose of a roundabout. It takes up a lot of real estate. You can move traffic faster, but you also have to realize that this traffic is consuming your environment. So, you know, I don't know if I'm for or against that. I think I'm for it, but I'm always the guy behind the guy who don't know how to drive in one, and that, it's always some little blue-haired old lady who's just kind of hanging out and doing her thing. But again, operating a tow truck and seeing this and seeing the accidents that go to a square T, I've seen those issues, so I guess I'm for that.
Very good. Thank you. Our next question from the audience. This one again stays with roads. It starts out with talking about the traffic backups and the delays and the pressures on the community. What influence would you try to use to help build a new bridge across the Mississippi? Oh, and I'm sorry, this would go to RJ Theil.
Again, first, okay. No problem. I'd start buying the lumber myself if it would get another bridge somewhere across the Mississippi, especially between 169 and Elk River. The need for that is fought by residents and city personnel and that sort of thing and our neighbors to the west. What I would do is whatever we can do, speaking with the Department of Transportation for the state, working with Hennepin County and Anoka County and Wright County. If we can find a space to help alleviate traffic, something's got to be done, because again, I will harp on that endlessly. There are 2,000 homes with 6,000 possible residents coming to our west with nowhere to go. They have one road out of there to the east and just one to the west, and nothing going south. So, a bridge is needed. All those poor people in Andover and Ramsey and everything, you know, you need a better way to get across, especially if there's construction, so.
Thank you. Tim Hutner, "Bridge Across the Mississippi."
Well, I happen to have a little traction in this one. Because I sit on the Dayton EDA, we talk about certain things that come through with our city. Brockton Exchange is a huge thing for us. It is a state-level event. It needs to be happened so that we can actually come off the 94, go through Dayton, and then maybe cross over, which is already received on the Ramsey side. But you have 4,800 people in Dayton, well, they're growing, probably 5,500 now, that are wondering why they moved out to the country when they're talking about putting in an express lane. So, again, we hear this as a Dayton issue, EDA. I serve on that council as well, the EDA council, and have some pretty good intel on that. There's things in place for it, and I don't know when the state comes through, if they're going to decide that we're just going to do this and Dayton ain't going to have too much to say about it. I don't know that. But our staff over in Dayton has been doing a wonderful job trying to make that happen.
Tim Hutner, thank you. Finally, Jessica Tezdal, "Bridge Over the Mississippi."
Absolutely. Let's do it today. I think that where the bridge goes is the biggest piece of that question, and my colleagues, they referenced it. I think it needs to happen in Dayton. The council head has had discussion and staff has worked with regional partners, including other cities, to impress upon the city of Dayton to adjust their 2040 comprehensive plan to include a bridge crossing, and it needs to happen. Additionally, in Ward 1, we have significant impacts, literally down the road, coming from the homes that are being built in Dayton, and they're counting on our infrastructure to funnel that traffic. We need to work as a city and as a council to assure that Dayton is prepared to service the residents that they are inviting.
Thank you. One more question in the area of roads and streets, and this is from a five-year resident of the city. I'm going to do a little paraphrasing on it. "Major disappointment," very happy about the city, "but major disappointment has been the lack of efforts to remove snow and ice from the city's streets. Was told by the person in charge of the city's department that it is not the city's policy to have dry pavement following a winter snow. What is your opinion of that policy, and do you think it needs to be changed?" And this starts with Tim Hutner.
Well, I happen to operate a plow along with my tow truck, so I get what they're saying. I understand, but how do you get dry pavement in the winter? That doesn't make sense. You get what you get. You plow your streets. The guys are doing everything they can. They're up all night. They're doing what they have to do to get us moving, let alone a dry system. So, I don't know if I have a real answer without wondering what her expectation of dry really means. And there's a lot of potassium phosphate that gets thrown on the road, and I see this because it eats our cars, and I'm the guy working on those cars. So, I don't know. I got some real questions that need to be followed up professionally, as opposed to just saying, here we are, we're on a council, and we're going to debate this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica Tezdal.
Certainly. I think this question definitely has merit. I'll share with you what I know about that ordinance and why it exists the way it does currently. The city of Champlin uses a mixture of three parts sand and one part salt in their plows. The reason they do that is to reduce the environmental impacts that salt has, both on the infrastructure, the pavement, as well as plants and grass and trees. So that's certainly something to consider. The other piece that relates is that our streets are categorized by their use, and so main thoroughfares receive quicker service than those that are in private, more, less traveled neighborhoods. And so, potentially, what that resident is seeing is that they may live on a less-traveled road, and so they're not getting to that dry pavement as quick as other roads are.
Thank you. And RJ Theil.
You bet. I think getting down to dry pavement is a bit unrealistic. I do know in, at least recently, the city appears to be using a pre-treating agent of some kind on Main Streets. I've noticed on Valley Forge, after major snowfalls, that they make one pass with the snow plow, and it gets pretty dry. And I've noticed it on other roads like Hayden Lake Road and that sort of thing. My own street always seems to be plowed in a timely manner. I think with the resources that our utilities department has, and with our budget, and with the amount of street that we have mileage-wise to cover, they do a great job. Again, sand and salt, I wish we could get rid of all salt. It just wreaks havoc on the environment, killing grass and plants, trees. It's terrible on the water. But until the day comes that you don't need salt, and it does only work at certain temperatures anyway, so they use more sand when they can. I think, though, if it's a policy, it doesn't really bother me that much. They take a pretty good care of the roads that we have, so.
Thank you. The next question starts with Jessica Tezdal. "What is your view of state aid to local government? What is the pros or what are the pros and cons?"
The con to me, particularly related to our budget, is that it's inconsistent, and so you can put into effect programming, or staffing, or initiatives based on state aid, and then potentially the next year it won't be there again. And so, it's just not consistent. In the city of Champlin, our, the practice of our city administration and the department has is to use state aid as a special project fund, and when we get it, we can apply it appropriately. But we don't include state aid funds as a earmark in our budget.
Thank you. RJ Theil.
Having the privilege of being on the planning commission and getting to spend countless moments looking at the city budget every year just for our perusal and approval, it seems to me that outstanding is the best word, as Mayor Karasik said it, about city staff. They take great care, and all the department heads are looking at the budget, and as Jessica noted, they seem to just view, well, if we get state aid, that's really great, because it doesn't seem to play as big a part of the budget as I would think it would. But as you know, with the political winds changing every couple of years at the state Capitol, we never know if the city's going to get amount X or amount Y, and who knows what's going to happen. So, I think the city does it pretty well.
Good. Well, thank you. And then, Tim Hutner.
Would you repeat the question?
I will.
I've absorbed that.
No problem. "What is your view of state aid to local governments? What are the pros and cons?"
Well, I don't know about pros and cons of what state aid can or can't offer. What does make sense to me, and I'm a common sense kind of guy, if we kept it out of our budget, other than for emergency uses, for pieces we might need, for disasters, whatever that might be to us, we ruin a truck, we roll over a sign and stuff needs to be handled, depending on how much we're talking about and where it should be applied. So, I think it should be business as usual. The budget should be ours, and if anything comes in extra, then we, of course, use that accordingly, wisely, not waste it. So, and then if we don't need it, then I don't know why I couldn't go to another area. So, I guess I'm for it to a point. 15 seconds, that's all.
Okay. Thank you. The next question, we begin with RJ Theil. "What is your position on sanctuary cities, and should Champlin be one?"
I have mixed feelings about that sort of thing. Personally, I would say no. I don't think that any city, municipality, state, or governmental body of any kind should be harboring for anyone as far as their political beliefs or something like that. That's the nation's responsibility, to me. I don't think that one state or city should be pitted against another. I don't think that one city should say that, you know, come one, come all, because you can't make it here. That's a good advertising slogan, but it's a bad plan. You have to treat all those cases individually, and I believe that local government shouldn't be in, put in the position of harboring somebody, because if they're seeking shelter, there's churches, and there's community groups and other things that should take care of that. That's my thoughts.
Thank you. Tim Hutner, "Sanctuary Cities."
I really didn't want this question today. I was hoping for anything but this one, but I can sum it up as a big no. I'm not one of those kind of guys. If they're sanctuary for here for a reason, why are they hiding, and what are they hiding from? I don't believe Champlin should even consider it or even be in the talks of doing sanctuary. So, there's other avenues that people can pursue if that be the case. I just don't think Champlin should ever, ever be one of them.
Thank you. And Jessica Tezdal.
It's a very good question. What Champlin is, is inclusive, we're mindful, people are welcoming, but I have concerns about drawing a line in the sand and making political statements as a city. I think that it behooves us to be tolerant and be good neighbors, but I have concerns about what could potentially occur if we came out as a city and made statements of a political nature, like being a sanctuary city.
Thank you. The next question that we received, we'll begin with Tim Hutner. Tim, just so you know, this question was specifically written to you, based on your biography, but it is also something that we'll invite your opponents to speak to as well. It's a question that says, "There is a perceived conflict of interest in serving on the Dayton Economic Development Authority, whose mission is, of course, to promote economic growth for the city of Dayton, and then you're also serving in the city of Champlin. Do you see that as a conflict? Why or why not?" And then, of course, we could invite the others to speak, whether they have any point on that as well.
Well, I wouldn't be here if I thought it was a conflict. So, what I do in my city and my time is my business. It ain't Champlin's business. Yes, there's going to be some mixing between the two, but really, for all the head-to-heads that these cities, two cities have gone through, why not have one person that can actually bring these cities together and say, hey, look, without the political stuff going through, here's what we see? If it ever got to a situation where I had to vote one way or the other based upon two different informations, I would abstain from votes on both sides. So, that's a challenge to my integrity, and, you know, I have this thing in life where you can pay me, but you can never buy me, and I don't think that that would ever be an issue with me.
Thank you for taking on the question. I invite Jessica Tezdal, if you have any response on whether you see a conflict of interest.
I can't speak specifically to Mr. Hutner and his position, of course, but I could see that there would be a conflict in making decisions about selling property and developing community into neighboring cities. For instance, as we develop the Mississippi crossings, potentially, there would be something that would conflict with a similar or, you know, other development project that might be happening in Dayton. I guess I would liken it to, if I have a retail center and I am in a city, I don't think necessarily that you would be making good decisions to, you strike that, I apologize. I lost my train of thought. Excuse me.
Okay. RJ Theil, did you have any comment on that question?
Sure, I would at least comment that, I mean, only knowing Tim briefly and in business and that kind of thing, I would certainly think that it would not be an issue for him. I'm a great believer in people's honesty and integrity, and where on the surface that might be kind of bad. At the same time, I'd look at it as an opportunity to have that fly on the wall in another city. At the same time, Dayton might think that of Tim here, but Tim lives in Champlin. He would have to be elected here in Champlin. You're not elected to the economic board in Dayton, I don't believe.
We are not. We're appointed.
So, right, and I just wanted to confirm that, but I think he would stay where his heart is, and I actually think we have to believe as a community that a person's running for office, that he would hold to his conviction of the office, and I don't think it would be a big problem for me.
Thank you all for your responses on that. The next question we move to is a little bit longer. It reads, "Per the 2017 Champlin resident survey, 30% of the city saw that Champlin is lacking in starter homes for young families, homes that fall between $200,000 and $300,000. What do you see the city doing, or what should it be doing, in the next four years?"
Who's starting?
Oh, and my apologies, Mr., you had the last, so Jessica Tezdal.
This is a challenge. Currently, construction costs for single-family homes are building out at about $350,000, which is far from the median value home in Champlin, that sits at about $235,000 at this point. What I think that Champlin has an obligation to do is to make sure that our housing stock is suitable to all life cycles, so that as longtime residents are moving out of their homes, they can remain in Champlin in potentially senior development or apartment spaces that are available, freeing up their home for young families to move in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
RJ Theil.
Sure, and luckily, we have an abundance of senior housing recently opening up in Champlin, but that sure doesn't solve the problem. It's a nice problem to have that so many people, young or old, want to move to Champlin, and not having starter homes on a regular, you know, open prairie where we don't have any room to build, it's tough. So, you have to kind of rely on people retiring and older homes becoming vacant, that kind of thing. It's not like we can bulldoze existing homes and start building inexpensive ones. The land is in there, and as we're 90% full, whereas you can never really be full as a city, because there's always going to be turnover, as can be witnessed by the Pillsbury Mansion being torn down, but I don't think they're putting starter homes on that property out on Lake Minnetaka, but here, it's a good problem to have, but we just have to keep going with the market.
Thank you. And Tim Hutner.
I need you to rephrase that question.
No problem. This was based on the 2017 Champlin resident survey. 30% of the city saw that Champlin is lacking in starter homes for young families, homes between $200,000 and $300,000. What do you see the city doing, or what should it be doing, in the next four years?
I guess I'd start off with the fact that the city really shouldn't be in the real estate business for starter homes or no homes. Well, I built my house in 86, which was in 85. Well, I built my house in 86, which was an 85 start. And back then, a starter house was $73,500. You look at today's houses, you've got the economy pushing this. You don't have a city pushing this. So, logically speaking, the city should be doing what they do and keep the services going and keep the lights on, and the streets paved, and candidates in office. So, I don't believe the city has any traction there, and they should stay out of that business.
Very good. Thank you. The next question will start with RJ Theil. I think we have time for about two more questions, and then we'll be moving into the closing statements.
Can you be able to step up the volume a little bit?
We had had a question about the volume. I just would ask the candidates, maybe to just speak slightly closer to it. Thank you from the audience.
How's that? Can you hear us now?
All right. So, this question is, again, from that resident survey, we received another question based on that. "Over a quarter of the residents saw a need for more entertainment establishments, restaurants, or cultural opportunities. What would you like to see Champlin focus on during your term?" And this again goes to RJ Theil.
Sure. Well, I think the city before it, right now, is working quite heavily with things coming in the Gateway Area and around Mississippi Point Park, about having things developed there. There's already things in motion there that aren't, you know, that we all aren't aware of, but I know what's happening. And for other entertainment establishments and that kind of thing, I think the city is moving along very well. I certainly have no trouble finding somewhere to go on a Friday night or a Saturday night in town here. There's a myriad of low-priced to high-priced, and you don't want to say high-priced, but we, I think we do pretty good for a city our size of 24,610 people, depending on which roadside you believe. But we're doing well. I think the more we move along, we're going to have more kinds of things come to the town. We don't actively recruit them, but I think we're getting more people trying to come in, so.
Thank you. Tim Hutner.
Repeat, please.
I will. Again, "From that resident survey, over a quarter of the residents saw a need for more entertainment establishments, restaurants, or cultural opportunities. What would you like to see Champlin focus on during your term?"
Can you hear me okay, sir? Okay. I don't know if Champlin really has a deficiency of anything to do. The Ruby Tuesdays building comes up, it's empty, they're paying their taxes, it's not in foreclosure. You know, there's restaurants constantly coming and going, liquor licenses, the cap is off. Now, they're going to have some people who are going to want to start doing some of that. I don't know. Personally, if I make a rule, it's the rule, and it would have to be really hard to change that. So, we got a lot of things to do. During, a couple summers ago, we had one of the police guys who would run a car show during Saturday nights, and I thought that was an awesome guy. I'm a motorhead, so it's kind of what we do. And there's always something to do. So, should the city start making stuff happen more and more for things because they're bored? How about get off your couch and go do something? Because that's kind of how it works, at least for me. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jessica Tezdal.
I agree that, I think the city has taken a lot of strides in developing, particularly restaurants, but also entertainment opportunities for residents. We have several new restaurants since, in the past year, in Champlin, as well as a newly modeled movie theater. My priority in the next four years would be seeing a development at the Mississippi crossings site, as well as the surrounding park at Mississippi Point Park. I think that those need to be what we focus a good part of our energy on.
And thank you. Tim Hutner, the last of our questions comes to you first, and as we mentioned before we met, we usually like to have something a little bit lighter for you. So, how do you like to spend your time away from being a candidate? What do you do in your spare time, if there is any?
There's very little time. So, you read my bio. What do you want to hear first? The cars, or the smoke and the meat, or building guns? Or do you want me to tell you about clockworks? Kind of, I'm intrigued by kinetic energy, and things that are in motion stay in motion until acted upon. So, for me, the clock side is you're building grandfather clocks, you're rebuilding them or making them happen. The car side is all about efficiency and engineering. It's one of my degrees is in engineering, and I kind of like the engineering thing. So, the gun side, I'm a big Second Amendment guy. At our shop, we build and design guns, and those are out there for target use. I'm not much of a hunter, I'm more of a long-range shooter, and I really appreciate the Second Amendment for that right. So, it's kind of what I do. I mean, if you look at my website at hutnerenterprises.com, this is not a plug, by the way. This is just kind of who I am, and I'm big in the computer side, because that's one of our degrees. So, that's how I spend my time doing that.
Thank you. And Jessica Tezdal.
I have three young sons, and so, Ryan and I, we each got bikes this year. They're now all on two wheels, and so, we are on the single track quite a bit. I usually have to be behind Camden, who's six, so I go slow. I enjoy reading. I have a neighborhood book club that I neglect more than I like, due to just being active in a lot of other things. I enjoy spending time with my family, with my neighbors. I really appreciate this community and all of the wonderful people that I have access to and enjoy spending time with. So, oh, and I, when I can, we watch a lot of Netflix. We recently started Orange is the New Black, and that is very good.
Thank you.
Longmire.
So good. I'll watch that one.
Trading ideas.
Longmire. Writing it down.
There you go. And RJ Theil, we'll let you wrap this one up.
Sure. When I'm not working, or dealing with, you know, planning commission or helping, and other volunteer exploits and that kind of stuff, or helping, you know, my wife, who runs the family, fish. I fish, and then I go fishing. And sometimes I fish, and then I fish a little more. I used to hunt a lot, but leg injuries, body part injuries, and that kind of stuff, I don't hunt as much as I used to. Consequently, getting a little older and hunting partners dying off, that kind of limits it to fishing. They're all still alive. So, for years and years, I coached on Champlin's Elm Creek softball team. We went to several national championships. We finished second most of the time, never won, but that's about it. I like the outdoors, and I, too, shoot a lot, that kind of thing, the gun ranges in town, that kind of thing. But that's it.
Well, thank you all for handling a number of questions this evening. Now, we'll move into our close, which is your closing statements. As we mentioned earlier, we would just pick up where we were, so Jessica Tezdal, we'll start with you.
Okay. Well, in closing, thank you again for this opportunity. Thank you to QCTV for recording and for the viewers for watching. Thank you to the audience for being here. You're very kind, your faces, I appreciate. In closing, I feel like I am the best candidate in this election because of my experience on the city council. I am well-prepared to continue the good work that the council has begun in the past two years, and councils prior to that have contributed to. I have positive relationships with both staff and residents. I'm open. Communication, collaboration, and community-minded common sense are my leadership values, and I want to do good for this community. I feel passionately about preserving the special place that we have here.
Thank you. And RJ Theil.
Yeah, I'd like to say that it would be an honor to serve Ward One, and as I've, you know, had a major load of experience working on the planning commission for 15 years. I worked with Mayor Boynton and Huglum, and Mayor Nelson, and Ryan Karasik, and of course, I can say that a healthy portion of the current city council served with me on the planning commission. And they do have served on different commissions, the park commission and that sort of thing. And I think my experience in dealing with all that, and believe it or not, I am a political science major, even though I'm a, I'm a computer network engineer. How I went from there, I don't know. But I've been on a lot of different boards as volunteer for different leadership areas, and I think I have the experience that can help the city continue on its current path and even get better, as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you. And Tim Hutner.
We still good? Derek, can you hear okay? First of all, this is a blast. I didn't, I was going to come over and do some Kung-Fu, and I thought, you know, that just would go back upon my integrity and common sense. So, my conclusion's going to be written out, and it's kind of mechanical, so here we go. "In my closing statement, I would like to assure Ward One that I am here for us. My demeanor and tenacity are such that if presented with an issue, I will dig into that problem and fight the good fight. Ask around for people who know me. My history of morals and ethics and problem-solving is what I bring to this table. I'm the guy who gets things done." And again, thank you for this opportunity to the League of Women Voters. Please visit the table. I should ask the stuff back there if you want to learn more about me. And I'm asking for your vote on Election Day. And P.S., have a wonderful Labor Day.
Thank you all. I would like to thank all three of our candidates for speaking to the voters of Champlin about the issues tonight, and for running for public office. Our democracy depends on this type of citizen involvement. Thanks to our audience in the room, and we had a great audience here tonight, for listening and coming up with great questions. I invite all of you to visit the LWVABCMN.org website for the League of Women Voters ABC, or minvotes.org for more election information. Please do remember to vote in the November 6 election. I wish you could all see the red stickers in the room that say, "I will vote." It's a treat to see. You can apply for an absentee ballot at the Secretary of State's website, or come to City Hall anytime after September 21st, when early absentee balloting begins, and you can vote in person at City Hall. On behalf of the League of Women Voters, Anoka Blaine Coon Rapids area, and Champlin Women of Today, thank you and good evening.
Thank you.[1791.54][1791.54][applause]